Call the regular council meeting for the corporation of the town of Cobalt to order on October 17th, 2023 at 6:03 PM. Disclosure of pecuniary interest in general nature thereof. Any? Three, public meetings, zoning amendment for Argentine Street Train Station pursuant to section 34 of the Planning Act. This evening, there is a public meeting scheduled for one proposed zoning bylaw amendment application. I will briefly summarize the procedure to be utilized for the meeting. First, the town manager will provide counsel with a description of the application and will advise counsel as to when, how, and to whom notice of the public meeting was circulated for the proposed amendment being considered. The town manager will also advise of the appealed procedures and will summarize any correspondence on file. Next, we would introduce the town's planning consultant, who would then advise of the purpose and the effect of the bylaw amendment and provide for any other information that is relevant to the application. From there, the applicant, the public, and then counsel will have an opportunity to speak to the bylaw being considered through the mayor. After the public discussion, the zoning amendment public meeting will be closed. And now declare this meeting to be a public meeting pursuant to section 34 of the Planning Act to deal with the following proposed amendment. One, application 2023-1 zoning bylaw amendment for Argentine Street, the train station. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? None? Would the town manager please provide a description of the application?
Thank you, Your Worship. The application submitted by Mr. PDFX lands located on Plan 54R 5804, Part III Coleman, Part ONTC Station Grounds SRO with the municipal address of Argentine Street, a municipality known as a train station in the town of Cobalt. The purpose of the application is to rezone the property from light industrial M1 to light industrial exception zone to permit residential uses.
Would the town manager please describe how the notice was provided?
Notice of the public meeting was provided by publishing a notice in the local newspaper on September 27th, 2023, and therefore was published at least 20 days prior to this evening's meeting. Included in the news was an explanation of the purpose and effect of the bylaw and a key map showing the location of the property and a description of the lands to be affected by the proposed bylaw. Notice of public meeting was provided to all public bodies within the town of Cobalt. This includes, but not limited to, school board, Enbridge Gas, Hydro One, Trans Canada Pipeline, and Ontario Northland. Coleman Township, as our neighboring municipality, was also notified. Notices were also mailed to all property owners within 400 feet of the subject lands. All notices were mailed on September 20th, 2023. These circulations were all provided in accordance with the provisions of the Planning Act. Members of the public are advised at this point that unless they make an oral or written submission to counsel before counsel makes a decision on this application, that any subsequent appeal to the notice municipal board may be dismissed by the board. Anyone who wishes to be notified of the council's decision respecting the proposed zoning bylaw amendments must submit a written request to the clerk. Forms to provide a written request are available at the entrance to the council chambers. Three written comments were received prior to the public meeting.
Unfortunately, due to unforeseen circumstances, the town's planning consultant could not be here tonight. In his absence, he has provided a report that the town manager will now read out loud.
Thank you, Your Worship. This was from our municipal planner, Jim Diamond, and I quote, "I prepared this memo to provide counsel and staff with my preliminary recommendations regarding the application to permit two additional residential units within the former Cobalt Railway Station Building. My final recommendations and zoning bylaw amendment will be provided to counsel once we have had a chance to review the comments received before and during the public meeting. I apologize for being unable to attend the meeting on the 17th, but will watch the recorded proceedings and discuss matters with staff upon my return to Ontario." Background. When considering the proposal, we need to be aware that a building permit has been issued for the construction of two residential units within the train station building. That permit remains valid. Those units were to be constructed above the first floor and complied with the zoning bylaw that was in effect at that time the permit was issued. With a valid permit, there is nothing to stop the construction of those units, and therefore, we consider them to be existing units for the purposes of the zoning bylaw and the Planning Act. September 2022, council passed a new zoning bylaw. The new bylaw changes the zoning of the train station from a commercial to zone to an industrial zone. The previous C2 zone, which was a commercial, permitted residential uses above the ground floor. The current M2 zone does not. The proposal now includes constructing residential units on the ground floor. This would have required an amendment to the C2 zone had it still been in effect. Policies, considerations. The Planning Act requires that by any bylaw passed by council must comply with the official plan. Council rescinded its official plan in 2022 to enable it to enact the new zoning bylaw. Therefore, there is no official plan in effect. The only policy documents that require consideration are the provincial policy statement, the Northern Ontario Growth Plan, and the Planning Act. Each of these documents require council to balance competing policy directions. The balance depends on the local circumstances and the greater public interest. In this situation, the competing interests are those of health and safety due to the proximity of the rail line and the need for economic growth and housing. These are his planning comments. There have been a few opportunities, excuse me, there have been few opportunities for economic growth, and there is a tremendous need for affordable housing in Cobalt. In my opinion, where these opportunities are presented, they should not be easily dismissed. The concerns about health and safety must also be considered in light of municipal liability. Ontario Northland Railway shares choose liabilities and concerns. These matters must be addressed before I am satisfied that the greater public interest has been protected. To address these concerns, together with the ONR, we have suggested the owner enter into an agreement with the town, an ONR that would absolve the municipality and owner of any responsibility for any damages resulting from the proximity of the residential use being constructed directly abutting in the rail line. The agreement would require all offers to rent, lease, or otherwise occupy the building must include a warning clause advising that, one, proximity to the rail line will result in noise, vibration, and air quality issues for periods when the railway is in use. Number two, the occupants are aware of these potential compatibility issues and will not hold the town or ONR responsible for any issues that may arise from the residential use being in proximity to the railway. Number three, acknowledging that the use of the railway may increase over time, thereby increasing the frequency and impact of trains on the residential use, and the agreement should also require the owner to install a chain link fence between the railway lands and the train station lands at the sole cost of the owner. There may be other matters that arise during the public meeting that we will need a more full sum review. As noted, following the public meetings, we will prepare a final report, bylaw amendment, and draft agreement for council's consideration at the next meeting. Sincerely, Jim Diamond.
Does the applicant?
Yes.
Does the applicant or agent acting on behalf of the applicant wish to provide any additional information?
We can do, yes.
Come forward and just introduce yourself to counsel.
Sure.
Yes, you may.
My name is Duff Ryan. I'm an architect. By way of background, I'm originally from the Lisker, Ontario, born and raised, but I spent most of my career down in the Greater Toronto area, moved back a couple years ago, and now I'm doing some projects in this area. And my client Mel, he has hired me to do the design work on this building. And I'm not sure, do we want to take up, put up the, you want to see, have a walk through the project, or I believe there's a PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah, he's just getting it put up.
As he gets to that, I think the planner has done a good job on covering the planning issues. I'll speak to a couple of those, but the building everyone is obviously aware of is one of the most beautiful buildings probably in Northern Ontario, built in 1910. We did an application roughly two years ago to do the second floor of the building. The ground floor of the building was vacant, the second floor of the building was an office use. We did an application to convert that to residential, which was approved, and we have a permit for that. The ground floor consists of the sort of four components to it. So there's the original waiting area, call it, in the train station, and there's sort of the washroom facilities area, and there's another space which was storage and repair and leave. So when we made our second application to put in three units on the ground floor, I was unaware, and Mel was unaware, that the zoning had been changed from C1 or C2 to industrial, light industrial use. So from an architectural point of view, when you look at the building, it's never going to be a train station again, or ours, but it's also never going to be an industrial use. It just would not work as light industrial use, say a wood shop or something else. So there's two uses that it could be. One being a commercial office, the other being the, the sort of reception hall or the waiting area of the train station would lend itself very well to assembly type use or special events. Possibly, possibly a brew pub or distillery or something like that. And the rest of it lends itself either to office or residential. So we've identified that there's a really dire need for residential uses in the area, and the building really lends itself very well to that. And we're fortunate to have an owner who has a wherewithal and a desire to maintain the building and to upkeep it, change the windows, do all the things that are necessary for a building like this to survive, because if it's left vacant, unused, it will not survive. Like your snowmobile that's sitting in your backyard for a year, or your car that you don't run, the thing is going to die. And the building will just slowly fall apart if it's not used. So the systems need to be used, you need to have an owner that's willing to maintain it. The building needs to be used and occupied in order to survive. And in my mind, as an architect, I love this building, and it's very important to me that I, that it is used. And I see the residential use for a number of reasons as being the most appropriate for it. It lends itself to it as a dire need for residential, for housing in the entire area, not just Cobalt, Lisker, Taylorbury, all the Tidus Beach shores. And this building works extremely well for it. So from an architectural point of view, I believe that this is the best. I believe we have an owner who is very conscientious and really wants to do the best thing for this building and keep it, you know, using. It's an investment, of course. So to have it as a long-term investment for him, I think this is the very best use. The issue that the ONR brought up in terms of, you know, the safety issues and the liability issues and so on, those are, those are things that we would do in any case. We would do a fence that goes along the property, along the rail line there. We wouldn't do chain link, I don't think. We'd probably do something that's more complimentary to the building. And also in terms of the lease and that sort of thing, it's a solid masonry building. Noise, vibration, and those sort of things, they'll always be an issue when a train is passing by, but they're not going to be an enormous issue as if it was a, or let's say, you know, wood frame building or something like that. It's much more heavily impacted by those sort of things. But overall, in my opinion, this is the best use of that building in this location, being so close to downtown, need for housing, all the rest of the factors that the planner indicated. And I'm in total agreement with you. And I think it could be a very nice development for the town. The leftover space that we haven't made any planning for, we've indicated on our plans, if you want to flip through, I don't know if there's a ground floor plan there. These are actually working drawings, so excuse the bubbles, those would not normally be. And now that's the second floor. Go back to the second. Okay, there we go. So you see, this is a small scale, so what our drawings here are indicating is that we have a blow up of that. If you're looking at the plan on the top, there's a basement plan, the plan on the bottom is a ground floor plan. So we have three units on the, on the left-hand side of that plan. On the right-hand side is the original waiting area, or wherever you want, whatever you call it for the train station. That space, we haven't determined what the use is going to be for that yet, but in the zoning bylaw, we'd like it to be relatively flexible to allow assembly use, special events, special events, whatever it might be. So this, in the end, would be a residential and assembly use, assembly meaning like a restaurant is an assembly occupancy, this is an assembly occupancy, a venue for special events is an assembly occupancy. So that space would remain intact and become some form of assembly, probably an event venue.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No problem.
And does any member of the public have comments or questions?
Hi, Neil.
Yeah, as the owner of the property, I believe that's appropriate.
Just a little bit of a difference.
Can I just get you to introduce yourself to everybody in case they don't know who you are?
So, hi, Neil. My son and I own the train station. We're a business company here locally. We're, I'll say the word, we're best kept secret around here. Most of our work is done Western Canada, Southern United States. Home is this area. We're not native to Cobalt, but we're native to Lisker. I grew up on a farm as a child. So I've been across Canada, United States, all my life. My home has been in the area. So I just want to throw these things out. We have a commitment to that train station and this community, and need you to realize that. We've spent a lot of money on that train, bring it back to what we could, and some of yous may or may not have been in there. The ceilings are back to the original. We brought a company in and taught us how to grind the floors and bring them back. So we've owned it since 2015 or 14, but I have to compliment the city of Cobalt. We've had, in that timeframe, one window broken, there's been no vandalism, very little graffiti on the walls. So this summer, when we were going to start cleaning it up and getting ready, there's people down there. And we all know, we have a mental health problem in the world, and we have addiction problems in the world. The worst thing we can do is be hard on them, people that don't deserve, because there's no help for them. So one day, there were like six or eight of them sitting there, and I went and sat down beside them. I said, "Here's what we're going to do, we're going to start doing some renovations and something out here." And I appreciate you guys never doing any damage, keep doing what you're doing. And, you know, they, they, they've been good. I'm proud to say that. One window broken. So yesterday, when we don't have anybody for construction there, I have a gentleman that was down every day and inspects. So he calls me at the office and says, "That guy here, he's really drunk off," and I'm scared. "Don't move me out, stay in the building." And so I went down, we seen him on the cameras, because we have cameras. And this young man was doing his thing. He had his drug paraphernalia out and that. But we didn't phone the police. There's a reason I didn't phone the police, because they come, he doesn't, what's he doing? He's doing nothing to hurt me or that building. He's doing his own thing. I get the police, they go and confront him, he might get an altercation, he might get tasered or whatever. And they arrest him, I'm back out, same day, and there's no help for him. So how do we make change? User making change, this is where I was heading. The town of Cobalt, they can change you, more businesses coming in. I read a young lady with a key thing in that, awesome. So if we can do something like this, we've got, these apartments are going to be executive grade apartments. They will be, we're even trying to maintain the floors upstairs, the carpet, the floors be sanded and redundant. All brand new windows, I felt he said. The windows look almost identical to what the windows are there. The doors look almost identical to what's there. We want to keep that up here, so we're proud of that building. So again, we have a commitment here. The venue, he's up, we have ideas, but we don't know what we're going to do there yet. We want to get this going, it's revenue coming in, and then we will deal with the city here of Cobalt to be able to develop that. And he said, "Well, the chain link fence, no, it'll be a nice fence for now, because if some child ran out there and got hurt or dead, how could we ever forgive ourselves?" So there will be light fence for now. So the city of Cobalt, the town of Cobalt, these are doing the right thing. How do we make change? One step at a time. And I defend Northern Ontario. If it wouldn't have been for Cobalt, it couldn't have made a tenant, it might not be in Toronto, because this is where the money came out. Hopefully, we can work through this and, again, just all new appliances, washer, dryer, fridge, stove, dishwasher, microwave. Six new appliances, brand new, sitting there in the main room right now, ready to be installed. So we're ready, we've already proven our commitment to it. Hopefully, the town of Cobalt will agree with us and get this changed and carry on. All right, thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mel.
And I'll just follow up on one thing that Mel said there in terms of the use of the sort of assembly space. We haven't determined what is going to be the best use there, but so that, I've been speaking to the planner in terms of flexibility on the zoning bylaw, I wanted to allow potentially assembly uses or commercial uses or whatever they may be. Assembly is a, is a, is a building term, but commercial is more fluid by law terms. They're kind of, ultimately, in my world, they cross over.
Okay. Now, any members of the public have comments or questions, as there were none? Okay. Members of the public who did wish to speak were asked to complete the form provided at the entrance of the council chambers prior to speaking. Okay, please note that due to the absence of the planner, all questions from the public or, and counsel will be forwarded to the planner for a response in a timely manner. Okay, do any members of council have comments or questions? Counselor Anderson?
From what you're saying, you are working with our planner to keep things right, and you are working with ONR to, all the, the statements and objections that ONR had in there to work through those with ONR?
That's correct. I mean, I didn't deal with ONR directly.
Yeah.
The planner had, had the conversation with the ONR, but as part of my job is to deal with your staff, so Cassandra and your planner, and discuss what is the sort of best approach to use for a building like this. And so, yeah, I work with them to discuss what we think is the best solution, is this a good route to go? And that's part of my job, is to, to work with them to make sure that, I mean, for lack of a better term, that everybody's happy and everybody thinks that this is a good solution.
Instead of the assembly area, is there, is there a reason why you're going with that? Can you not stick another residence in there?
We could.
Sorry, Yoffy, I may. Well, I don't want to do that.
Yeah, I know.
It's too beautiful.
He doesn't.
Do you like? Yeah. I'll say today, while my son and I own that building, we will not have a council asking for residential in that area, not fully used. Everybody can change.
It's an incredible space. So I've done a number of projects, like I said, my, most of my practice is now, so I've done some number of projects where we've converted churches and condos and that sort of stuff. He lent himself naturally to it and I can very easily, make four beautiful units in there, but he said no. So, but it, it's an incredible space, and I think that he's absolutely right that using it as an assembly occupancy, I brought it up with him, he said no. So using it as an assembly, as an event hall or something, is probably the best use of it, but I wouldn't close the door on it entirely. My concern was, if you have a wedding or something, you got four residences, and the noise needs to be away. Yeah, the, the thing about the way the building is built is the, it's built, so it's a solid masonry building. So there's a, the partition wall or the structural wall that goes between where the assembly space would be and where the residential units are is solid base. You can't get better sound attenuation than solid base. There will not be a sound problem. And if and when Mel decides to make that an assembly occupancy, I can design that partition wall so that you won't hear a beep with, you know, sound attenuation techniques that we use all the time. And, you know, I've done residential condominiums that have, that have restaurants, bars and stuff on the ground floor, and they have to be designed by a certain, certain level of sound attenuation. And I can do that, it's a technical exercise, I can do that no matter what, almost is next door. Almost, every time, almost.
Is there any other questions? Counselor Welkow?
Thank you, Your Worship. I like the project. I think that's a good thing, and it's a good use for the building.
I agree.
Yeah. It's an old building, it's got to be used for something that just happens to be a good idea.
Yeah.
My concern is, you know, the Ontario Northland and their complaint.
Yeah.
And honestly, I can't see it's really doing anything until some kind of an agreement is reached with them that satisfies them as well. Uh, so, uh, yeah, and there were things that ONR was suggesting that are troubling to me, the closing of Commission Street, which is occasionally used as a bypass when downtown is busy or otherwise blocked. The idea of a crash wall is kind of concerning. But as is future deals with the ONR, we would like to have them stopping their train in Cobalt. So it behooves us to be on their better side.
I, I totally agree with you, but I, I think that, um, like, in my view, the, I mean, there's a railway track that's running right through the middle of town, kind of. And it runs through the middle of town in New Lisker, it runs through the, does it run through Hainaway? Somewhere. So, in New Lisker, there's many, many residential uses, but that train, train station, there's many, many opportunities for kids and for adults, teenagers, whatever, to be, um, to run into harm's way, let's say, along the railway tracks. Uh, I, it, it's a, it's a bigger problem than, that the ONR might have when their rail tracks run through the middle of towns than just on this one site. And I think the mitigating, uh, effects of the fence, like, to me, the, the main concern would be, let's say, a young family. So, they, I mean, you're not gonna stop teenagers. I ran, I was ruckus-ing around on the railway tracks when I was 14 years old. Just, they're gonna be doing it 20 years from now. But it's just a, uh, an unaware young child that might go and try to cross, totally not knowing, you know, what's happening. And to me, the, the mitigating, uh, effect of the fence will do the job. And I believe that the ONR has agreed that those two, uh, conditions be applied, and they will be okay with approving of it. If, if, if the council chooses to approve it, that we build a fence, and then we put in our lease agreements that, uh, I mean, it's kind of nowhere near, you're moving into apartment beside a rail track, but that you're aware that there's gonna be noise from that. And that's certainly something that Mel is a businessman and wanting to live his own liability with. When, he, he, when I mentioned this to him, he said, well, of course we're gonna build a fence, unfortunately, we're gonna lease a fence. We'll do that, that's automatic. So I don't think we're gonna have an issue satisfying the ONR. So I think, if that train crashes, it could crash anywhere, it's not, this is not a unique situation.
We can present the policy very soon. I'll get my lawyer to draft up a lease agreement, a tenancy, because he has 600, if he does. I can say this, present it to you, and you will want it. And I, I don't wanna hear any complaints of noise either to train. We'll present you this, the tenancy agreement.
Okay, um, I have actually a few comments to make. We are the first town to make use of our rail, railway stations. If you go to Inglehurst, there is residential units and a business in the old building, right beside the tracks there. And there is a fence between it and the tracks. Um, there's many towns that have repurposed their, um, railway buildings. And right now, the Minister of Housing has put a big push on developing more housing and affordable housing, um, across the province, to the point where they've created a task force that had 76 recommendations that were put out to municipalities, to earmark the five most urgent. So, I think in recognition of a for, increasing some affordable housing or just housing period, it's housing period that is a problem, it's not just affordable, it's housing. I've heard from many seniors, they don't wanna stay in their homes anywhere, but there's nowhere for them to go. There's a waitlist for any buildings that are being put up for seniors or for young families. And if you don't get your name on the waiting list immediately, as soon as they announce they're gonna be doing it, you're out of luck because they fill up fast. Um, and that is going to be an ongoing problem as our population continues to age in this area. So, these are all things I think we need to be aware of, and as we're making our decisions and going through this. The assembly space that they're talking about in the train station, I don't know if everybody has been in there or not, but the floors are just absolutely gorgeous in there. And the architecture is, it's stunning. There was a green mining conference in there a few years ago. And I helped with some of the organization of it. And I can say I was very impressed even before anything has been done to it. So I can just imagine what it looks like now. So, and I know Mel has offered that if they're down there working, if you wanna go down and there's no safety hazards, you can take a look at what they're doing. So, I just thought I'd put those comments out there, so that we're making a decision in all fairness as we go forward. And as for Commission Street, um, we are looking into that further. Is there any?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's been repurposed, but not to residential again.
It's a museum. It was.
Not a museum, it's a arts, um.
Art gallery, it was a museum for a bit, now it's.
Yeah, and their chamber of commerce is on there.
Yeah.
Right, so are there any other questions or comments from council? Sure, Counselor Anderson?
For me? Both of you. I'm so happy to see that you're looking after my things. I'm pleased to lead for the town on the restoration.
Okay.
So, anything on the outside you need to ask me about, I'll rack my brain and see what I come up with.
Excellent.
But if you need to re-point any of the, the, I know exactly where to get the, the sand that matches exactly. And so that brings you back up to the provincial standard.
Okay.
Excellent, and we're trying to do that, we, we've had people look at the windows, the windows are ordered, they're coming in any day, but they'll be outdated windows, like, energy efficient.
Energy.
So much like that, it's giving me the worst. But, you know, the venue part, we have not ordered the windows, we've always prepared. We've only ordered for, as the residential support.
Mel, why don't you actually sit here for the duration of the, um, public portion of the meeting? Just be easier for everybody to hear, so. I, I wasn't trying to be facetious, so that was actually an honest imitation to come and sit with your architect.
He takes the heat on the, what we gotta do, and I say in my dream, what we are planning to do. Getting back to the windows and doors, you can't get them. And if we could get them, they'd be custom-made and they couldn't afford it. So we've got energy-efficient windows that are gonna look very similar. So anybody that doesn't know, they're gonna go by and go, oh, yeah, the windows are beige looking. The green will be capped in aluminum, just like it is today, but it will be capped in aluminum. So, them, even in the doors, when the new York was in, all of that gets capped in green aluminum. So we're not changing any appearance of it, we're not cutting new doors and windows. Where we are blocking off a door, on the inside for residential, the outside looks the same. Anybody walking by, ah, there's that big wooden door, it'll be the same.
Yeah, we've come up with the details, so that the exterior of the building looks the same. Even though some of the doors and windows we don't need, we're gonna close them off on the inside with the details.
So, if the, I'm sorry.
Counselor Welkow?
Since Pat was gonna find you sand, can I just note that the roof was originally Vermont Green Slate in the original train station that burnt? And the architect we had when we did the restoration worked very hard to try and find something that looked very much like Vermont Green Slate, so, just some information for you.
Yeah, no, appreciate that, like, we've done some repairs on the roof, and afterwards, we can, when we bought it, then we've got that under control now, so. Anyways, if there's no other questions, I, I.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, that's.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, counsel for the opportunity to speak, and hopefully, we move forward on this. Thank you.
We're good?
Okay.
We're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, if there's no further questions, I recommend, um, that the motion on the bylaw be postponed to the committee of the whole meeting on November 7, 2023, to provide council with the opportunity to receive the town's planning consultant's final report. I hereby declare this public meeting closed. Uh, next, we have deputations and delegations. I believe it's Emily and.
Hi, it's Leanne, Emily's daughter.
Okay, Leanne? Yeah, you may. So, Leanne Mercier?
Leanne Mercier, yes.
Okay.
I'm a volunteer and consultant for the food bank.
Okay, and the gentleman with you? Okay. Okay, have a seat.
Thank you. We've put together a small presentation, um, mainly to create some awareness and get some clarity of some questions that some of my next up had about the facility. But really, just to begin, just to be a little, that's about the food bank. If you call Cobalt Colman Latchford area of the food bank, you can still hold. Oh, forgive me, thank you. So, the purpose of today, as I mentioned, we wanna raise a little bit of awareness about the food bank. What portion of the population is served? A portion of the clientele are served in Cobalt specifically, because the facility is here and we really love the town and wanna continue to have the support and support clientele in the city of Cobalt. And also, there's been verbal discussions, but we're not sure about the status of the facility. And so wanted to come to council to see your input and confirmation of the bill of stocks. Um, next slide, please, thank you. So, the territory itself, Cobalt Colman Latchford, and it goes to the boundary up to Miskinian Shores at Montreal Avenue. And that's where it stops, that's where North Cobalt hits, and then other food banks are responsible, from what I understand. Currently, the facility is located at 22 Girl Street, on the main, kind of that floor off, off the back end. That's where it's located currently. Next slide, please. Right now, there are a series of volunteers, um, a lot of them play multiple roles. So there are five management staff, um, a series of intake workers, a series of people who have good shopping and inventory. What we're noticing is, um, same volunteers continue to come to us, and they are getting older, not able to lift as much. And I personally wanna make sure that safety is a consideration for this, this group, which is why we're coming to the topic of the facility. Um, if you, if you can, to the next slide. Right now, what we're seeing is a marked increase in clients. From 2021 to 2022, the increase in clientele went up by 20%. And this year, from Q1 through to Q3, we're seeing 11, 9 to 11% increase in the number of people who are coming and seeking the services of the food bank. We anticipate probably in Q4, there'll be another 10% increase. Is that clear, Ben? With the population, it's, it's kind of, it's, it's continued to be the same in terms of the markup. There are people who, you know, are just want a little luck. There are people who are elderly, there are people who have families. We have senior and family clientele, and they're from all over the area. What I noticed was me, though, is that Cobalt clients represent about 90% of the people who come into the food bank. So definitely we'll continue to provide light-feeding service to the people of Cobalt for the students. So, which leads us to, and I wanna make sure that we have our time for your questions as well, but our current state is really, the current facility, you put it in its own, thank you. With the increase in clients, the increase in competition for, I guess, funds, you could say, in a small, long-term community. As I mentioned before, we wanna make sure that we're providing a safe facility for both the volunteers and the clients. What we do need to do now is, depending on the facility we have, is do an assessment of the operation so that we can break it out of the fold when they're coming to get rid of it. Right now, we don't have that ability. And we create a bit of an intake area, and we're considering that safely. And the volunteers can have their own little inventory area where they can kind of put the stuff together. Right now, between the outside, and with the winter coming, we're a little bit concerned about that. But we do think, if the current space is safe, we can make accommodations and make it work. If it's not safe, is there a plan to make it safe? And/or, how long can we stay there? And/or, are there other facilities available to, to lease to Cobalt Colman Food Bank? So really, our two questions are, is the space safe? Can we continue to lease it? And if it's not, are there other alternatives? Is the purpose of our, our presentation?
That's something that council will have to discuss and make a decision on. I can't give you an answer on that immediately, unfortunately. Um, because I can't speak for all of council with us without having the discussion around the table. But we can definitely put it on an agenda at the beginning of November. And we can come to some resolutions as to what we can and cannot do. Okay, is that, is that fair enough?
Absolutely fair. We just wanted to come forward, if there are questions, if there's material or things that we can provide that would be of assistance as you go through the process, we're more than happy to provide.
It's a, it's a humanitarian community service that we want to continue to operate in Cobalt. We do have a lot of clients, and many of them are very legitimate clients and need service. Setting that these are needs and also.
Okay, is there any questions for Natalie or Dan?
I have a question for you, Dan. Do we have a timeline on the demolition of that building, or what? Or going through?
Yeah.
I've just been in contact with the engineer, uh, Don Decker, and he's getting back to me with a number of items on that timeline as well.
And there will be.
Yeah, and definitely there'd be a letter and notice to tenant and that from the municipality.
May I ask, what kind of notice would be provided if, if they had to take it?
Depending on what the engineer says for a timeline. If it is a health and safety issue, there is no date, not, there is no timeline. Like, a 30-day or 60-day, it would just be, this is a time that needs to be.
Give as much time as we possibly can. I know, it's, it's a standard non-answer, and I apologize for that. Counselor Hunter?
I suppose, I think maybe one of the best answers is to be looking to move as soon as possible. Um, just knowing that it's going to happen and, and to plan for that, because we may not be able to give a lot of notice.
It has been, it was, was discussed. But again, like the town manager said, we're waiting to hear back from, um, the engineer.
Should we plan to take it, but should we be prepared to take it?
I would actually plan for, honestly, a worst-case scenario with that building. Because of the infrastructure and that north wall, as you could see it disintegrating in that, council will be looking at really what options the engineer says, and really tells us more or less what we can, we're not engineers here. Yeah.
Are there, will there, would there potentially be other options in the town of Cobalt to lease food to the bank, or?
That's something that council will have to discuss before I can say yes or no.
We should be prepared to move, but we don't quite know if we have another option yet. Will we wait for November?
Well, November 2nd, um, is when we can put it on the agenda to discuss. Sorry, November 7th, I keep having second in my head. But I'm sure that we'll hear back from the engineer before that.
Yes.
So.
I have a call into him right now.
So, you'll be notified in a more timely manner than our next meeting.
I, there are other buildings that aren't necessarily town-owned. Like, could we have the food bank maybe tell us what their minimum needs are? So that. Yes, square footage. Obviously, it's best to be wheelchair accessible, but long-term or not. Maybe there are other spaces, because you do pay rent currently. So, what you have is available, maybe there is a building in town that somebody would make available.
We need to consider the side of the building. The operation has an intake area, a waiting area. You have an area where all the food is stored, an area where the food is sorted. And we have to have area for four, sorry, five freezers and two fridges.
Okay, so do you have an idea of the square footage of what you're looking for?
The best number for us would be 16 or 17 hundred square feet.
That could be partial, I suppose, if you knew the square footage that you need for storage versus intake, that might, if it was a big open space, that walls could be put up. But if not, to know what your biggest room is that you need.
Yeah. The large room has to be where the food is shelved. We used to operate the food bank by having clientele come in, pick their own food, go through the shelves, pick their own food. Covid, we ended that practice. We haven't decided yet whether we terminate that practice or whether we will remain with the process by storing the food, putting it in boxes for people. And doing it that way.
Counselor Starchak?
Yeah, it's a thing, maybe an old church abandoned, or something that's not used right now. Good size for you guys, but not me.
Depending on the church.
Yeah.
The other issue with us, the combination is it has to be physically, financially viable.
Right.
The money we get for the food bank is donated primarily for the purpose of feeding people. So, if we could have to put too much money on housing, it will be the public that suffer. And the program won't suffer.
Any other questions or clarifications? Anybody? Well, I thank you very much, Natalie and Dan, for coming in and doing the presentation.
Appreciate your time, and we're happy to provide more detail if that would be helpful.
Okay?
Thank you.
We appreciate any assistance you use.
Okay, number five, adoption of meeting agenda. Draft motion, be it resolved that council approved the agenda of the regular meeting dated October 17, 2023, as presented. Need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Cooper, Counselor Starchak, any discussion on the agenda? No? Okay. Approval of previous council minutes. Draft motion, be it resolved that council approved the following minutes as presented. Regular meeting of council September 19, 2023. Committee of the whole meeting, October 3, 2023. Need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Starchak, Counselor Anderson, any discussion on those minutes? None? Carrie, sorry, the previous motion was carried, too.
Yeah, that's for both.
Sorry. All right, let's back up. Adoption of meeting agenda. All in favor? Okay. Number six, the previous council minutes. There was no questions? All in favor? Carrie. Items for council consideration, 7.1, motion for support for, for no, support for Northern School of Medicine. Draft motion, be it resolved that the town of Cobalt strongly requests the provincial government grant NOSM, university's request, Northern Ontario School of Mines University requests for a permanent increase in the annual base funding by $4 million before the end of this fiscal year so it can continue to deliver on the mandate that the conservative government initially established in response to the needs of northern municipalities. A mover and a seconder. Counselor Wilcox, Counselor Starchak, any discussion? All in favor? Carrie. Surplus lots, draft motion, where is it? The regular council meeting on September 19, 2023, council declared the following lots as surplus. And whereas all lots were evaluated by a licensed realtor. Therefore, be it resolved that the following lots will be advertised for sale with the estimated current value of the property, and all transferable legal fees will be the responsibility of the purchaser. Number one, 14 Lang Street vacant lot, $12,000. Two, 16 Lang Street vacant lot, $10,000. Three, 8 Helen Street Lotwood House, $15,000. Four, 17 Argentine vacant lot, $5,000. Five, 21 North Avenue vacant lot, $14,000. Six, 28 Laird Crescent vacant lot, $12,000. Seven, 39 Watson Place vacant lot, $16,000. Eight, 32 Pyrite Street North vacant lot, $16,000. Nine, 35 to 39 Pyrite Street North vacant lot, $20,000. For a total of $120,000. Need a mover and a seconder? Counselor Starchak, Counselor Anderson? Discussion on the motion? Counselor Cooper?
Item number nine, 35-39 Pyrite, usually keeping town possession because there's an existing sanitary sewer taking in part of the adjoining street that goes through that adjacent property. Actually, this council, Wilcox, is in the house. So, the main sewer goes through there. So, if that sewer has to be moved, we need a place to put it. And if you go south, there is a residence there, and if you go in market, we go right through these properties.
Worship, right now, those properties don't have any service to them. But the sale of these properties, it's going to be as-is, as it was, as a tax sale. It would be up to the individual who purchased it with the tax sale of the other property. It's up to them, their cost to move that sewer pipe if they want to, or your property. I had Public Works look at all these properties as well, and they said there would be no issues.
One that's there now is a town sewer going through private property that we probably don't have an easement on. If we don't have an easement, he can tell us to get it off of there. But.
Well, with the, when we did do the tax sale, it says sale as-is.
As-is, as-is, yeah.
Yeah. But on that one with the current sewer on it.
Yeah.
And if they wanted to have other infrastructure in, it would be up to the cost of the new owner of the property. Because they may want to just buy that property to, just as a storage area.
Just like I or anybody else has an easement to move through a property.
The council decision on which properties they do want to do.
Keep going. I know Counselor Wilcox had something he wanted to speak on.
I was concerned about eight and nine. I was going to move that we delete, and I was from this discussion. In part because of points Counselor Cooper made. I didn't realize through my house that that was a town sewer. I thought when it was built, many moons ago, they just grabbed it, grabbed it, put it in a larger-than-normal sewer pipe. By the way, it leaks at the front end. I should warn you. But anyway, that said, I'm also concerned about whether or not these properties on 35 to 39 Pyrite Street are going to have any kind of ability to access a gravity-oriented sewer system. I suspect not, because I know with Steve Cooper's house, they had a very real problem getting it to run there, and those properties are lower. So, that could create a real problem. And I would feel very, very hesitant about selling a property to a purchaser that's registered or in our official plan, it's marked as residential, when in fact, it may not be able to access some things that a residential property would need. And I can't see how he's going to do anything at his own cost even to alleviate that. So, for now, I would like to see most of those deleted.
Okay.
I'll make that as a motion if we can get a second.
Before we do that motion, I'd also like to speak on what Counselor Wilcox just said. I know that there are properties that gravity-fed sewer systems do not work on, and there is actually a pump system that is installed in them to get the sewage to where it needs to go. So, just so that we're aware. And again, as Steve stated, these properties are going to be listed as-is. It's up to the purchaser to, in the case of as-is, and I know because I bought a house as-is, to obtain title insurance and also to look into any issues with the property before they buy it. And to be aware. And it's not that the town will withhold any information either.
It's not the issue of these two properties having issues with them. It's an existing property that somebody else owns now at the sewer system. So, if we have to relocate, we need a place to put it.
Okay, but at a time when we're struggling for money to pull $36,000 out of our potential, I think that's a council, a decision of all of council. Counselor Hughes?
This sewer problem. Do you anticipate we have to move it at one time and why?
Right through the middle of the property, and he wants to build a new one.
Is there anything that says, wow, that's existing, so you're out of luck?
I don't know. We would have to have an easement on it. We don't have that easement. I don't know. I just think we should dig into it a little further before we jump into it. And if it's sold, then we have surplus on that need.
Counselor Hunter?
Well, I guess my question, like you were saying, it may or may not have an easement. So, I think we need to know whether or not it does to actually have this conversation. Because if it did, it wouldn't be a conversation. And what's to say that that person who wants to build the house doesn't buy these adjacent lots to have a larger lot?
Okay. You may.
Right? So, maybe let him buy the lot, have a larger lot and deal with it.
Counselor Hughes?
I have a question. That's 35 to 39, that two properties or is it 37 and both?
All right. And Counselor Wilcox, you wanted to introduce. Do we complete one motion before we do another motion here?
Yes. So, we'll complete this one first and then bring on the other properties.
Sorry. I want to do this right way.
He wrote on the amendment first to see what you're going to do with the original motion, and then you vote on the original motion.
Okay. So, the amended motion?
It would be resolved that following lots, minus 32 Pyrite Street North and 35 to 39 Pyrite Street North, be advertised for the sale with the estimated current value of the property, and all transferable legal fees will be the responsibility of the purchaser.
Is that how you would like what your amended motion read?
I was just going to suggest we delete those two items and then do that second part that you read. Change the original motion to read items one to seven be approved. And then when we can satisfy Harry's question about easements and all the rest of it, we can bring it back to the table, yes?
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to do something precipitous that locks our hands in and leads to other problems perhaps.
Question?
Counselor Hughes?
I would like to see whoever's property that this is affecting maybe come and address this. Would it be nice to me? I'm sure they're very well aware that this is going on quite a long time.
Yeah, I don't understand what you're asking when you say, so there's an existing property? Is this what you're telling us? There's an existing property that's impacted by the sale of these?
Well, we would, the town of Cobalt would be impacted if we can't move the sewer.
Okay, but there's not an existing house that's impacted by the sale. Sorry?
They tore the existing house down, and he's going to build a new house.
Okay.
So, if he puts the house in the old footprint or anywhere near the old footprint, it's going to be right on top of that sewer.
Well, sewers usually go under the house?
Yeah.
Not municipal sewers, a private sewer does, but that one takes into account four other houses behind it.
It was already under the house, though, before, wasn't it?
It's only the, it's only two feet underground.
Most of it's two feet underground. A portion of it is above ground.
Okay, but when, I just want to caution council also, when we sell a property as-is, again, it's up to the purchaser to determine the purpose of what they're purchasing to the infrastructure that is there. I understand what you're saying about the easement. We can investigate that. It is, like you said, we can take it off and then put it back on in the later day.
Yeah, worship. A building permit wouldn't even be issued if it was going to be impacted with the sewer. Municipal office will not allow that. There won't be, I was built there anyways. There could be a house on the property, doesn't have to be in that exact spot where sewers. It could be over 10 feet.
Forget it. We passed a planning and zoning bylaw that allows tiny houses in Cobalt. Do you have the?
Be it resolved that items number eight and nine be removed from 7.2, the surplus lots.
Okay, so I need a mover and a seconder on the motion? Counselor Wilcox, Counselor Cooper, all in favor? What do we do with the original motion? Okay, that's an amendment to the original motion. Okay. So, Carrie, on the amended motion?
No, just the amendment.
All right.
Amendment was carried, the removal of the two. Now, we have to see if we want to pass.
Okay. I am confused, but that's okay. We're in some regular, okay. I don't need to read the whole thing again. A mover and a seconder, can we do that already? I lost track.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? One to seven? One, or yes, from one to seven, yes. All in favor? Okay, Carrie.
The motion.
Yeah.
This will be advertised as soon as possible.
We're one to seven?
Yes.
Okay. And. All right. Then we'll bring these other two back for direction. Okay. 7.3, Smithville Health Unit Community Placemaking Grant. Draft motion, be it resolved that the town of Cobalt submitted an application to the Smithville Health Unit Community Placemaking Grant. Need a mover and a seconder? Counselor Cooper? Counselor Starchak? Any discussion on the placemaking grant?
I'm just wondering what would we be asking them for?
And that's what the discussion's for?
$1,500, no. $1,500 for entrance seating or.
My question is, what are we going to spend the $1,500 on? What are we doing?
Okay. So, let's score on tables. Anybody got an idea? Okay, so let's score on tables. Anybody got any ideas?
This is cool. Or it's just to put in the application.
We need to know why, what we're submitting the application for. So ideas, Council Hunter.
I, I'm not entirely sure what the limits are, but I know there was a request earlier a couple of months ago for the not far apart, the park next to the library, the Paul Penna Park. So maybe something related to that. I don't know if that would
According to the, what I found out about the application and looking at it was to improve community spaces. To improve community engagement. So any ideas along that way for any of our community spots? So that was a good one. Council Willcox.
They also note adding shade features and or seating. And I'm thinking, you know, the summers are getting warm to much warmer and we don't have a whole lot of shade downtown for anybody to stop and get a breath. It's kind of like a little oven on the main street. So could we look at trying to get trees planted, maybe in the Legion Park? Might be a good spot. Couple of maple trees in there or something provide shade. Maybe something along the main drag, just to, just to break it up and make it look a little bit more more, more interesting. I find in other communities around us, you look at main streets and you see trees planted fairly regularly. I like that idea.
Well, we hadn't paved our whole of ours. Trees.
We could not pay.
I hesitate about the Legion Park because then we hide the plaques at the back wall. Uh, that's my only concern there. I do agree, it would be nice to have some shade along the main street. So what could we get for fifteen hundred dollars? You got to break up the pavement. And then you got to plant the tree.
Yes, depending where you order them from, roughly four hundred and fifty bucks for a decent sized tree. You got to dig four foot hole and plant it.
Council Cooper.
We'll go to bench and a couple of trees where the sculptures are across the road. Place in a spot there.
Or does it have to be a tree for shade? If you've got a bench, why not have it be covered?
Would that promote somebody to sleep on that bench though?
Yeah, it could be like more like the pergola style. So it's shade.
And are you, where are you talking for something like that? We, we can't have it on the sidewalk because it interferes with winter clearing and the, Council Willcox.
My thought for trees is because of course, yeah, we have to do something about our climate change that's going on and trees are one of the things that we can do in a small way to help alleviate it. They become carbon sinks, which is a good thing. And trees, I think, are children and family friendly too. I don't mind sitting under a tree someplace. I don't know if I want to sit under a, or kids want to sit under a pergola particularly. Yeah, it's what, what feels more comfortable for a community.
Council Hughes.
Or we just skip this grant altogether?
We can, but.
Council Anderson. Last night's historical society meeting, we were sort of listing off the plaques that needed to be replaced because of vandalism. You know, over the summer and could it go towards those?
It doesn't, I don't think it would qualify because it's not improving public space or community involvement, engagement. And that's the purpose of this grant?
Some of them were down in the, you know, the park beside the library and things that we're going to be discussing, you know, a bit of redesign theirs.
Council Hughes.
We do have lots of room now that the new track down there by the tech park. Lots of benches and spots for benches or trees. I like to suggest maybe, this is maybe not a topic for another time. Something like Wisker does with the memorial trees, you know, and people that have passed away, the benches and the trees. We could maybe do something on that walkway like that.
That's definitely a discussion we could put on a future agenda. But we need, so do we want to approve this and send some ideas in? Uh, or do we want to give direction to staff on what we actually want to apply for? I guess that's a better question to ask council. Um, so I don't know, go around the table, trees, Council Hunter.
Oh yeah, I was going to say it sounds like trees if we make it big and say trees, location to be decided. I like the idea of trees in Tech Park for more shade. Oh, they speak Willow by the water would probably do well. So trees.
Okay, trees for Tech Park? Okay, another idea that I discussed with somebody was a sun sale. A shade or is that what it's called?
A shade sale.
A shade sale down at Tech Park as well. Somewhere shady for somebody, you know, you want to throw a blanket down or have a picnic, you've got somewhere out of the sun down there or you're just sitting watching your kids play or?
Quite easy to me. You put three posts in the ground and then you call the local tarp guy. He comes, measures them up. You give the turnbuckles in and just climb up and touch them in your They have them at a couple of schools here and they look very well.
Then you take them down the winter.
Yeah, yeah, in fifteen minutes you take them down and hold it up.
You want to investigate those? They're not maybe a tree or two along Main Street?
Anything that involves at least one tree from Main Street, I'll look.
Okay, um, so Council Anderson.
Just as a reminder, I have at least three and maybe five white pines, which would be better put over because it grows a big, better put over in Tech Park. But they're now about this high and I'm going to have to dig them out of the side of that hill and I don't want to throw away.
Discussion with staff, I guess, in the office.
Okay, come and dig her out.
Okay, so Council Star Chuck.
I was going to say if we get trees, can we get maple trees? So we can get that nice red in the fall. We lack red, reds and oranges.
Well, I caution you, please, because don't forget there's going to be maintenance down the road. So it's going to be something that we're not going to want to have to be picking branches off, up off the road or the sidewalk and after heavy winds. I've lived down south where they have plenty of maples and I've seen the damage that some of those maples can do as they get older. So we need to look forward in the future on the impact they're going to have. Uh, and are they going to have the space to really do well in the downtown part? Uh, because you've got buildings that you've got to make sure that they're not going to get so close to. So I don't know. Um, anyway, we can move it along. Uh, make a suggestion that we give direction to staff or I'll put it out there and we'll go around and see if council.
I think it's November third is the deadline.
Yeah, so that's why we got to get it out there now if we want to do it. Um, a shade sale and a couple of trees?
Two trees.
Two trees in the downtown area.
Harmony left over in the budget.
Negative, negative.
Okay, so all in favor of that direction? If you want me to repeat the direction? Carrie. Seven point four elimination credit card transaction draft motion whereas at the committee as a whole meeting October third, two thousand and three. Council receives the staff report twenty twenty three, ten, three, one. And whereas municipal data indicates the credit card transactions are the least preferred method of payment, but carry the highest costs. Be resolved that council approved the cost saving measure of eliminating, eliminating credit card transactions beginning January first, twenty twenty four and public notice be given. Need a mover and a seconder, Council Cooper and Council Hughes. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Carrie. Draft motion be it resolved that council accept the items for council consideration as presented. Need a mover and a seconder. Council Anderson, Council Willcox, if you have your name. And up? Any discussion, further discussion on the items for council consideration? Okay, all in favor? Carrie. Items for council information, seven point five, Q three variance report, January first to September thirtieth, twenty twenty three staff report. Twenty twenty three, ten, seventeen, oh two. Has everybody had a chance to look over the variance report? So that we know what we're working with for the last quarter of the year?
Your worship, as it looks right now, if you're looking at the expenses and Q three, you look like we're under. But we still have not been invoiced for a number of our capital projects. And that number will turn dramatically.
By how much do you think?
That number, the exact number unknown still, but it will be fairly high.
So it'll go probably less than zero, twenty five to maybe minus.
Talking too bad. Yeah. Revenues really, you get funding and now the expenses still have to be processed. So I'll set like with those capital projects, like we've already run into how many water breaks this year? That is our main deficit right there, with the cost of everything for the repairs. Escavators in, paving after, there's so many items involved with that. And that is the one particular item hurting our budget. Because no one could predict it. What was previously done years ago, like over eight, nine year period, there were three. Well, we are well over three just this year alone.
I just had a, the reserves audit entries, aren't we? Reserves, that's what we have currently. Okay. I asked that last time.
Anything else on? Seven point six funding to Cobalt Public Library, twelve thousand five hundred. Draft motion be it resolved that council approved the releasing of twelve thousand five hundred as an operating grant to the Cobalt Public Library as directed at the committee as a whole meeting October third, twenty twenty three. Need a mover and a seconder, Council Anderson, Council Star Chuck? Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie. Draft motion be it resolved that council accept the items for council information as presented. I need a mover and a seconder. Council Cooper, Council Hughes. Any other questions? All in favor? Carrie. Eight bylaws and agreements, eight point one bylaw number twenty twenty three dash twenty five to adopt a water utilities management policy. Draft motion whereas council receives staff report number twenty twenty three, oh nine, oh five, oh three. At the committee as a whole meeting September fifth, twenty twenty three with a recommendation to adopt a water utilities management policy. Now therefore be it resolved that bylaw number twenty twenty three dash twenty five being a bylaw to adopt a water utilities management policy for the town of Cobalt. Read a first, second time on the nineteenth day of September, twenty twenty three. Be read a third and final time and passed the seventeenth day of October, twenty twenty three. And further that said by law be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. I need a mover and a seconder. Council Star Chuck, Council Cooper? Any discussion? Hey, all in favor? Carrie. Eight point two bylaw number twenty twenty three dash twenty eight to adopt amendment number one to bylaw twenty twenty two dash twenty four zoning bylaw. Draft motion whereas corporation of the town of Cobalt has received an application to amend zoning bylaw number twenty twenty two dash twenty four and whereas authority is provided pursuant to section thirty four of the Planning Act. RSO nineteen ninety CP thirteen to pass this bylaw. And whereas the council of the town of Cobalt held a public meeting in accordance with the requirements of section thirty four of the Planning Act. Now therefore, the corporation of the town of Cobalt enacts that bylaw number twenty twenty two dash twenty four be amended as follows. One zoning bylaw twenty twenty four is amended by rezoning the property municipally known as Argentine Street. Train station from the light industrial M one zone to light industrial exception. One M one dash one zone as shown on schedule A one attached to and forming part of this bylaw. And further, an exception is added by including the light industrial exception one M one dash one zone as section four point seven point three point one and shall read as follows. Light industrial exception one M one dash one zone, notwithstanding the provisions of the light industrial M one zone to the contrary. Within the light industrial exception one M one dash one zone, residential uses up to four dwellings are permitted. Uses in the M one dash one zone in all other respects, the provisions of the M one zones shall apply. Um, be taken as read a first and second time in the seventeenth day of October, twenty twenty three. A mover and a seconder? Council Anderson.
I'd like to move that we defer this until we hear about from our planning advisor, Jim Diamond and until the and until the owner and builders have had time to work out their agreements and everything. So we've got everything solidly in place for what's happening in that building.
I'll second that.
Okay. Council Anderson moved, or Willcox seconded?
And I think it should be to an indeterminate date until we know that all the agreements are in place and we can go ahead and say, yeah. She's recommending an indeterminate. Whenever, whenever things are getting in place, then that's the time to do it.
Yes. Okay, so the amended, the motion is be it resolved that draft motion eight dash two bylaw number twenty twenty three dash twenty eight to adopt amendment number one to bylaw twenty twenty four or twenty twenty two dash twenty four zoning bylaw be postponed until all agreements are in place between the O N R and the builder. Okay, um, and this was moved by Council Anderson, seconded by Council Willcox. All in favor? Carrie.
Who was the, were the initial ones to go into discussion? Who was the mover and the seconder?
It was moved by Council Anderson and seconded by Council Star Chuck. Oh, sorry. Okay, so do, we amended it? So did we do this though? No.
Amendment for this, Carrie.
Okay, so I move on. Eight point three bylaw number twenty twenty three dash twenty nine to adopt an amendment to user fee bylaw twenty twenty dash fifty. Draft motion be it resolved that bylaw number twenty twenty three dash twenty nine being an amendment to the user fee bylaw to amend schedule D to Draft motion be it resolved that bylaw number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine being an amendment to the user fee bylaw to amend schedule D to include encroachment fees. As presented at the committee of the whole meeting October third, twenty twenty-three. Be taken as read a first, second and third time the seventeenth day of October, twenty twenty-three. And that further. And further that said by law be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. Need a mover and a secondary, counselor Cooper, counselor Will Cox? Any discussion on the? Counselor Hunter.
Um, can I ask our town manager just? Because there's an application for, I, I guess I just want to understand it better. It's not really about the motion, but understanding. So people are paying fifty dollars to apply. It, is it at the town's discretion or is it just pay fifty dollars and then?
The, uh, worship. Right now for the application, the fifty dollars and then you continually get charged fifty dollars annually for it.
And it's like an automatic, you pay your, and so it's like passed. Like there is, so there's no way that did, because it's an application, there's no way that the town would like deny an application, just.
Was it an encroachment? That's going back to the encroachment policy, this is the, uh, charging or the financial portion.
Already passed the.
Yeah, the encroachment policies are even by law. So now this is just, now if you're, you have an encroachment. Uh, or an agreement, you, you're fifty dollars upfront and then every year after that's fifty dollars.
And so what's enticing somebody to make the application?
Well, if, uh. Going back to the encroachment bylaw when that was passed.
If, if somebody's, um, if somebody's built an addition or a deck or something that's over their property line, then they're able to sell it. Is that in the encroachment will come to light at that point and that's where this will come into play. Um, Steve, do we get the staff to forward you the encroachment bylaw?
Oh, I have the bylaw.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean you know that there is an encroachment and that was also about being able to plant trees, et cetera, right? So I'm just.
Uh, now with the sale of properties, uh. Just prior to the end date of the sale, they will be mentioned, the lawyers will be notifying, uh, the purchaser. That there is an encroachment because of all the details that is required now from our municipal office.
So for the known.
Yeah, they're not going to go hunting them down.
I just need more clarification too, until you find you have an encroachment, say it's a fence, you're a foot over your property line, so every year you pay. Fifty dollars and you can have that fence.
That's on over town property.
On, um, on the top.
It's a neighbor that becomes a neighbor to speed.
Oh, okay, nice.
Is this going to enable people then to suddenly? Decide to build a fence a little bit further out and enlarge the property and then it's automatically given that they just now have to pay an extra fifty dollars and it's, the town isn't going to say, well.
We could look at a both, worship, we could look at a dozen different scenarios on this one. Here into look at some different variables. Right now, just as a standard. During time, here's your agreement for your encroachment, fifty dollars annually, you'd be charged that as well.
A guarantee.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? All right, uh. Any other, some other questions, all in favor? Carrie. Eight point four bylaw number twenty twenty-three dash thirty amendment number one to accessibility plan bylaw twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three. Draft motion be it resolved that bylaw number twenty twenty-three dash thirty being amendment number one. To the accessibility plan bylaw to amend schedule A. Customer service as presented at the committee of the whole meeting October third, twenty twenty-three. Be taken as read a first, second and third time the seventeenth day of October, twenty twenty-three. And further that said by law be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. Need a mover and a secondary. Counselor Anderson? Counselor Phil Cox? Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie. Eight point five bylaw number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one to appoint a chief building official inspectors and a fire prevention officer for the town of Cobalt. Draft motion be it resolved that bylaw number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one being a bylaw to adopt a chief building official. Inspectors and a fire prevention officer for the town of Cobalt as presented at the committee of the whole meeting October third, twenty twenty-three. Be taken as read a first, second and third time the seventeenth day of October, twenty twenty-three. And further, that the said by law be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. Need a mover and a secondary. Counselor Cooper, counselor Will Cox? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Carrie. Uh, nine unfinished business, none. Ten new business, ten point one schedule of accounts. Be it resolved that council receives the following schedules as presented, schedule number twenty twenty-three dash eighteen. In the amount of two hundred thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. Schedule number twenty twenty-three dash nineteen in the amount of a hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-five cents. Need a mover and a secondary. Counselor Hughes? Counselor Cooper? Any discussion? Counselor Hughes.
Is that a good question? Um, I see here we pay crossing there. Is that, is that shared by the school board or does school board not cover cost tax? That's municipal.
Yeah.
Then I see yellow pages, sixty-five bucks, seventy-five monthly, maybe? Guess, like, maybe we should, I don't think it's advertised from September eleventh to October tenth, twenty twenty-three, sixty-five bucks a month. Nobody looks at the elevators, choose either the elevators and which about half the. Five years.
No, no.
Had it before.
I, I did have the same thought about the yellow pages that I was going to pick up later. It, it's usually on an annual contract. So they wouldn't just be able to cancel it next month, but I did do think it's something to consider canceling.
Okay, something we can discuss with the budget committee and recommendation can come to council. That's what they so choose. Okay, any other questions? Counselor Hunter.
Uh. I know in the past, the town has spent a lot of money for our highway billboards. And that's been quite like this is Cobalt, you know, the historic Cobalt. Billboards.
Hmm.
No, I, so I just, that's something else to look into before renewing any contracts to make sure. Cause that has become quite expensive.
Billboards themselves in Highway eleven?
Yeah, some of, I think we rent some of them, I remember that.
At this time, move forward, uh, we don't have anymore, like, we're not being billed for any signs.
Okay, that's great.
Counselor Hughes.
I just got a couple of other questions about the accounting of this. Like it says payable to Cobalt Legion branch forty-four, then it says Michigan Foundation donation. So who paid that? Michigan Foundation donation pay that? We pay that, who paid that five hundred and then that twelve fifty?
What that was, was comes through our accounting system? Do it, so it, it's.
Yeah, okay, it is a wash, okay. More that fancy accounting. Okay, right on.
Anything else? All right. All in favor? Carrie. Uh, mayor's report, um. I've had two respondents to my challenge. About, uh. What they love about Cobalt, I'm, I'm not prepared to read them quite yet. I'd like to get a couple more. But I am also next going to put the challenge out to the counselors, so. I am going to ask at the next meeting that we go around and I would like to hear from your counselor. What they love about Cobalt. Something brief, something positive. And if you really don't want to speak, you don't have to. Well, so we won't pull out any, um, torture devices. Okay? And that's all I have. Uh, other than I am stubborn, if anybody knows my family, they will know that and I am not going to give up. I'm bound to determine we will get the public engaged in our community in a positive way.
Are we allowed to hear what they said or?
I'm going to read them after, I'm, I'm hoping to get a couple of more first.
Okay.
And we have to have some discussion around the table. Um, as to setting some things up. Okay. Uh, number eleven, closed meeting, there is none, twelve, business rising from closed meeting, there is none, thirteen, confirmation bylaw. Draft bylaw be it resolved that bylaw number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council. Of the corporation of the town of Cobalt be taken as read a first, second and third time the seventeenth day of October, twenty twenty-three. And further that said by law be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. Need a mover and a secondary, counselor Cooper, counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carrie. Adjournment, draft motion be it resolved that the regular meeting of council be adjourned at. Seven forty-four P M. Need a mover and a secondary, counselor Wilcox? Counselor Starchuck?
Let's give it to you.
All in favor? Carrie.